It's twelve fifty-nine down in the bottom right corner.
It's broken.
Broken.
I took it off the wall.
I kept looking at it and it was never the right time, so I just.
It's right twice a day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I get approval or coordination additions, corrections, or anything to the agenda?
Do you want to add that?
Police agreement?
Yeah. Oh, I gave it to you. That's why I can't find it.
You need to do that.
Why don't we do that?
Discussion on.
Maybe just discussion after we'll do item twelve after closed session.
Okay.
With that change, I make a motion to approve for the budget. But for the agenda, well, social.
I just made a motion and a second anymore discussion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Approval on Monday, act over ten minutes.
I thought the minutes read well for October, then I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll start from there.
Just made a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item on the agenda is to discuss and consider resolution twenty-two zero one five merchants park contribution. And I see we have Chris Whitaker in the room. Did you want to say some words?
You know, just. Give a brief summary about Project Chat Chat, Team R and Court Partner Director, and from C. Carroll here as well. Still pursuing improvement to merchants park including. Expansion of the press box. Installation of new ADA outside leaders dugout expansion. Fencing, screening, and then lighting. It's a total project nine hundred and twenty thousand. The city did apply to Destination Iowa. The application was scored, which not all the applications even get scored. They don't get that far, but. The way the committee came back and deemed that the project wasn't transformational. What we did in twenty fifteen sixteen is park city transformed it. This is just, I think, a continuation of that. I didn't see it as. As that transformational, which is unfortunate, but. City will hopefully consider a resolution tonight. You know, reaffirming their commitment of at least three hundred and fifty thousand towards the project. Moving on, reapply to Destination Iowa under economic facility category and then pursue a number of other grant applications to get to that nine hundred and twenty thousand. So. Again, this is just really to. Confirm or reaffirm the county's commitment of fifty towards that nine hundred and twenty thousand. So whatever sources.
The Destination Iowa was the two hundred and thirty thousand that turned down, correct? So that's going to be hopefully done privately or through the next grant?
Through through other grants. That's the point. So I can't tell you where. I mean, what I'd like to say, yep, we're going to get another couple hundred thousand out of Destination Iowa or Vision Iowa through their CAT program. I guess I don't. I don't know where it's going to come from, but we're just going to apply to as many sources as the city can and to the Carol Athletic Association, the private. Nonprofit that does the fundraising towards that nine hundred and twenty-five.
So and the Iowa High School is good through twenty-four and twenty-five, correct? Through twenty-four, so it's good next year in twenty-four.
Yep. During years two and three, so we're coming up on grant two. This contract, that's when we'll be doing a lot of the value.
Was that in part of the grant that you wrote as far as that we were hosting?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm wondering if Destination Iowa knows something from Iowa High School Athletic Association and that suggests.
It's all speculation.
I have no, I have no problem with doing this. I just wondered if that's why they gave about a hundred million dollars and you were asking for two hundred and. Two hundred and thirty thousand.
They have funded a number of large, large projects.
Was part of that field dream?
Yes.
I'm not saying that's a reason not to go forward. I just wonder if the writing is not on the wall.
Is this the same resolution we. Approved last night?
Yeah, maybe it was tied to the brand.
This, this is just a more generic. Resolution being to say.
Well, you and I had a conversation.
And the way I believe it raises, if the city puts in nine hundred and twenty, the county will.
The city puts in three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but towards the nine hundred and twenty thousand, so for whatever sources, you'll be part of the fifty. Your fifty is part of that nine twenty.
And the original motion was that it came out of local option, sales tanks.
Over two fiscal.
Over two fiscal.
So is contingency part of it gone then this? Time.
It's not tying it to Destination Iowa.
Yeah.
It's just tying it to the investment of nine hundred and twenty thousand.
So what you're saying is that once that nine hundred and twenty thousand is when it would take.
Well, no, eight seventy.
Eight seventy.
So Carol Athletic Association's a hundred grand. Other grant funding, hundred and sixty-eight, Carol Community School District, ten grand, Kemper, ten grand. And then the missing piece is two hundred and thirty from Destination Iowa. And the city is still tonight, something agenda will approve the three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
I mean, you're not going to start short of that, are you?
Let's see, we can start short of one.
That would get you when you don't have that total funds raised.
I'm not, not my.
I guess that's what I have, you know, you and I talked.
Yeah.
I think.
I mean, here's the thing.
Sort of limitation or tied to some.
I mean, to me, the way the resolution is, it's you're going to participate at fifty and nine hundred and twenty thousand on traffic. We come back at four fifty, then I think it's half of that. We're going to have a conversation before that. That would be a different conversation. So. I mean, if you want, we can come back up here. If we do five more grant applications to five different sources, we can get that funding commitment tied into every grant application we do.
It's easier to do it once you haven't.
There's no advantage to that, is there, Chris, in that?
No, okay. I mean, it says that therefore we're going to pay fifty thousand towards the nine hundred and twenty thousand.
Well, I'll make that motion. I think we committed it once before.
Out of local option self.
Local out of local option self.
All sense.
Over two fiscal years.
Over two fiscal years. Twenty-three, twenty-four.
All right, there's. Then a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, resolution.
I'm sorry, sorry about that.
That's all right. Awesome. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I have motion carries. There is a place here for you to sign stuff. We're in Conservation Department staffing request. I see we've got Jason and the newest member out of Conservation.
He's up there or?
Um. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, you can just come on there. Oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter. All right. So, yeah, we're here to discuss adding a staff member to our environmental.
We did it open. It's hot.
To our environmental education program out of family for the conservation board. So for those of you who have a question, Kristen Barrett.
Over here. Kristen, go.
Kristen Barrett is our new naturalist. She started with us in April of this year. She really brought a whole new perspective and outlook to our environmental education program. Been very aggressive in what she wants to do with the program in Carroll County. So if you guys kind of remember back to two thousand and five, when we built the nature center out there. There was always kind of a thought process to have two naturalists, most counties that have. Nature centers have at least two naturals, if not more. So when that building was built in the office, there was a second office put in and all that kind of stuff for an additional naturalist at that time. That really never transpired. So now we're looking at with, you know, some new blood in here, some new ideas, looking at kind of what she wants to do with the program, really extra help. It just allow us to do so much more. We've talked about it at our conservation board meetings the last two months. Our board, the conservation board is on, as approved, moving forward, hiring additional naturalists. So obviously they're here because it's it's a money thing too, and I just have another person, so. Really, I feel it's kind of my job to justify you guys why we need another naturalist. Looking back, so I've been here twenty-three years, going back to when I was a summer kid, summer intern in ninety-four, ninety-five. We had never added a staff position to the conservation department. We've only set seven different staff members. So we've changed a lot in twenty-eight, nine years. We've added a lot. We didn't have a nature center back then, which we do now. So there's a lot more going on with every part of the field. And I think, you know, it's time to move forward and we can, we can do more with our community program. So. I put some stuff together. I know you got a big agenda today, so I don't want to just want to pass those around all the same. Just to kind of. To justify a little bit kind of what's been going on since she started. And feel free to chime in on any.
Run around the table.
So on the first page, and I'll go through this kind of quick, I kind of made a summary page on each tab. So and then everything else that in the summary is kind of back there. If you want to look at it in more detail, it's all there. So. Kristen started with us the end of April, so this is basically her reports from May through September. They're going to include anything we've got active yet. The total number of programs, a hundred and five, total number of participants, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five. And, you know, most of these months were through the summer, so a lot of this is summer camps and, you know, we don't have a lot of school information these months. And then some of the training she's attended already. That's one thing. Big with Kristen, she's into, you know, further to her education, which ultimately helps us out. And then all her individual monthly reports are there. On the second tab or the first tab, I guess. Environmental education summary. New programs offered, so since she started, these were the new programs she's implemented into our community program. A lot of different stuff in there. Kristen, if you want to go and talk about a few of those.
One of the biggest ones that we've been doing recently is that we got a donation for. From residents, whoever in private, that's from my child as well, to get new archery equipment. So for the NASS program that's listed on there. I'm going to almost every middle and high school in the county to teach the archery program for sixth grade through twelfth grade. So that's Glidden, Ralston, Green Rapids Bay, or Kemper, and Carroll throughout the year, and that's a. A two to three day program, and so we're spending, spending anywhere from. Two days all the way up to nine days at the different schools to get to teach them this archery program, which is brand new. This year, and it's something that gets offered to schools completely for free. So that's been a big expansion. Of something that we've been able to offer and kind of in that same realm of new things for schools. With having the history museum at Swan Lake State Park, we're going to be incorporating some history field trips. In to bring another side of environmental education, but also incorporate in some natural history things as well. And then obviously there's a lot of new public programs and things we've been trying and some more informal things. Where people can come out and learn things kind of on their own as timing works for them, but also some more structured things as well. If we've got the building better birders workshop next year, we have the owl lunch program where people can come learning something. So we kind of have a good range of structured and less structured things too. We did continue some things you can see on there from years past that we kept going. But we're expanding some things as well. There's some expansion too with science programs. Being expanded in a few different schools, including Carroll and. Eglid and Ralston as well.
And then on the second page, there's just some new programs that we've been kicking around, really. Kristen's boundary waters training. So we talked about maybe possibly incorporating the boundary waters kind of schools as a public program. There's a Nordic rocks cross country ski program, we're looking for funding sources for purchase. Cross country skis that we can do both in the schools and just as public programs. We've got a few schools interested in doing overnight wilderness camping trips. They used to do a kind of an incentive camping trip down to Springbrook. Carol did as a kind of an incentive for. Student behavior, student success, but since we don't have Springbrook anymore down there. You know, maybe try to incorporate something like that into the free author. Getting back into both under education and just an outlook of steering some general programs. And then also maybe incorporate in some sort of a winter festival that you already can do in conjunction with the festival rules. And then those are listing of the summer camps we offered this year. For the different age groups. And then just the rest of that's all the. Information on my executive table, I need to get this different stuff we're looking at doing, some of the stuff, programs we've got. So kind of into the nuts and bolts of this, what we, what we're really looking at doing and what we've discussed as a conservation board. Is changing Kristen's job description to environmental education coordinator and then hiring another naturalist. That would, and this first page is just basically the full job descriptions of that. But this is just kind of a summary. So basically our new coordinator is more of a supervisory. Planning, coordinating. Budgeting, but also still doing programs, you know, I don't want to get that. That cloud we have anyways, we're still going to have two people to do programming, but that's. Ultimately, what we want, that some of the more administrative type duties can kind of be sectioned off. One person has to go to for if somebody needs something environmental educational for planning, scheduling programs, there's about one or two person. Then a naturalist to plan programs, do programs. Full job descriptions are there, but that's kind of what we're looking at as far as the structure goes. And then on the very last tab is, is the dollars and cents. But what we've talked about as a conservation board, obviously we have a hierarchy and a position. We've got to be able to pay separately, so. In changing Kristen's. Title, coordinator. And I've got on the last page, I'm trying to show you that. Give a little bump. I mean, naturalists would start around forty-two thousand. That's kind of where we started, Kristen, and. Particularly starting spot, and I wanted to get in there, you know, how it's going to be. Vipers and everything, and obviously the big kicker with everything is what employees is. It's a symbol, if they have a picture, that's a big discrepancy, I remember. So kind of what, I mean, what our proposal is. With environmental education, obviously it's a year-round commitment because we do school stuff, there's schools and sessions and summers, you have summer camps and. Other outdoor activities, I mean, the winter outdoor activities, get some of these other programs going, but. So we're looking at probably if, you know, if we can make it work. Yet in this fiscal year, this is all to take the budget in that month, but looking at hiring somebody maybe around February, that gives us a little time to. Get training done, getting training, getting kind of acclimated to what we do. Typically right away in April, it starts to speak field trips coming out to the lake, so it's it's busy and a hurry. That rolls right into summer camps. So really for us on our end anyway, to have somebody come on board. Not really that it's the off season, but somewhat of the off season, rather than trying to throw somebody new in right in the summer. To help us out a little. Just on what we do and keep it somebody comfortable in a position, so. So if, if we would start February or, you know, even stretch it out to March, that number would be a little older, that would be roughly the change. To this current fiscal year that we will need to make. And then going on the future fiscal years. Depending on insurance, a change to our budget. So on the very last page. Kind of like I've done with things in the past. Kind of compared everything to counties, our side with. This kind of setup, most counties, especially larger counties do, I didn't do all those larger counties, as you can see my disclaimer at the bottom, because. The bigger counties, they will stop and always just. They obviously have much larger budgets and their pedigrees are a lot different, so I just feel as. I took these counties, they're very similar in budget size and population size, so it's a fairly comparative number. Most of them, I can kind of start at points on the previous page. A lot of information I know I'm a quick. Little meeting, but. Think it's something moving forward that we really want to expand our environmental education part. Two people really are going to be to be a lot more efficiently. Kind of where we're at, so we're, as I said, the conservation board's approved. Doing it, but obviously it's a, it's a balance and sense thing that we just can't go ahead and do it, so.
Does it, you know, animals on the conservation board? So how would you expect to handle that? Increase. It's been a spend offset in the budget.
Well, I think we'd be able to offset it, we just have to do an additional.
So you have no other revenues covered right now?
No, I mean, just on a way in this group.
How much new revenue has come in with these programs that you're providing?
Most of our, most of our programs, we want to try to, I mean, the summer camps and stuff we do, some of the camps where we provide. Some of the overnight campouts and stuff, where we actually will provide food or stuff, we'll charge enough to basically cover.
Cover costs, okay.
So Kristen, you had an intern this last summer. That worked out sort of okay, right? Person helped, as you said.
Yeah, we had an intern, which is great, and like we said, our area team is emerging towns and all this year, so she was. Unexpectedly gone, which it was nothing that she couldn't be there, but I think it really highlighted how much. It, how we were perhaps like over expecting from our interns, like we were leaning on them more than perhaps we should have been, just because. There was only one naturalist, and so we were perhaps treating them more like a full-time employee. And expecting them to fill a bigger role than perhaps what could have been for an intern. And I think that got brought to light when they weren't there realizing like. That how important it was to have that person there, because then if they were gone, you didn't have them to fill that role. And so we had a lot of other volunteers and staff members that kind of jumped in and kind of came to the same conclusion too, that it would be. Not only would we expand and be able to offer more summer camps if we had another person, but it also just would run more efficiently. And also be a better educational experience for our intern. If there was two, if we had two full-time staff members, that could be helping to develop the programs instead of having to lean on. An intern, which from an efficiency standpoint, a safety standpoint, a lot of things, it would just make things run smoother. And allow for more educational opportunities with that intern instead of kind of just having to throw them into it. Letting them kind of, you know, gradually build up some of the skills and get to see more of the training with it.
And that's one thing that I. I jumped in and helped a lot when our intern was on the center, so. It gave me kind of a new perspective a little bit. I guess, you know, when you've got, depending on your size of your camp, but if you've got, say, twenty kids, for one person to try. To keep twenty kids all. Moving forward to a goal at one time, whereas if you could split them off and do two separate things with them, do different activities. Whereas really you don't feel comfortable sending just an intern with a set of kids, and that's not really, they're there to help and not. Be a full-time staff, or if something would happen. For need a response from the full-time staff, you need to have this intern, somebody that's more professional and has the knowledge and stuff on what to do in different situations, so.
Did that intern was compensated for that work? Was the intern compensated?
Yeah, that work.
And that's in your budget now, that compensation portion of it.
Yes. We're not, that's the only thing needed. What's that? Another vehicle. Um, we talked about that for now. We're just going to see how it goes down the road, but it would be immediate. And like I said, we have, we have the office space, and there's a computer in the office. There we have others. Or at startup, cost would be minimal, really. The office is set up to be used.
Yeah, and for vehicle, I mean, we talked about in that same thing of a second full-time staff person is like. There has been a lot of interest in trying to do more of these like overnight camping things and things like that, and so there would be a potential if. You know, that proceeds that we would potentially need a different vehicle for that endeavor as well. At some point down the road, that that would lend to a second vehicle for another person. I talked that too, is same thing if we're going to be, like when I went and did my training about these. Trips up to the boundary waters, a lot of them, they had to. Partner with other counties to make sure they had enough full-time county staff to go on these trips. And so that's another nice thing, if we had two full-time staff, we already have, you know, both people, we wouldn't have to. You know, we have two full-time staff that would be able to lead some of those trips as well.
You still need to have a need for interns then to, if you did go to a second naturalist?
I think so, because just. I mean, for one, it's a learning thing for the interns. A lot of times the interns get school credit doing that. And it is just helpful to have the more hands, the better, especially if you're doing a summer camp, so that's pretty much with the interns, that's what they are there for. More, the more people you have in areas to.
Do you, you get reimbursed for those interns through some federal state programs? You used to, didn't you?
There used to be. There used to be, a long time ago, there used to be a program through the DOT that did. Because we used to have little summer crews that worked out there, already have an adult leader, and that was all through the DOT. And then high school kids, they followed the Blue Shirt program at the time.
Or, yeah, those through job boards or something like that, maybe.
It was, it was a program through the DOT. I don't remember what it was actually called. It had a name.
Yeah, your helpful thing about having the summer interns is we offered programming on Saturdays, like amphitheater programs and pop-up programs and stuff like that. And it's nice, you know, for the interns to learn how to do those and kind of take them over as well, so then we can expand, so we can offer. Some more programming and then somebody not locked into doing, you know, every weekend, the entire summer, because we can share them, and that's a good. Learning experience for an intern to take. Learning experience for an intern to take over that program and be able to offer those. And, you know, allows us to be able to offer programs then most of the days during the summer. Um because there are some programs that they can kind of take over and lead on their own, um that are not. Quite the same level of summer games, so it's definitely valuable and from an educational standpoint as well. Um for them to learn, you know, from the industry and build up more people, but also just. For someone to help, so we can offer public programs and summer camps, and we're not locked into one or the other.
And I guess that's one thing that would be beneficial too, is if you have multiple programs going on, especially during. The winter time when you've got school programs, you can still be doing school program. And if you've got something, that would be education center. Ultimately do two, two programs at a time, especially if it arrives, which it has instead of one time. It gets to be a challenge to schedule. And going back to the archery, that's another one that. You know, if you, depending on the school and how big their class sizes are, if you get. Twenty kids trying to usher you into it, but one person trying to help each, each one learn. And to be able to split the kids up and have two people to. To kind of oversee that versus one person trying to watch twenty kids do it, so there's just a lot of, I think. On our end anyway, benefit to have.
The education center and nature center, same though. Oh, you referred to both different cities, okay, yeah, no, I. The staying busy during the winter months, did that be a concern for two full time people? Because of going to in school.
Yeah, and there's been an expansion too, because there's um some change over with. Uh Carol and Glenn Rawson in particular with increasing the number of science programs that they are offering. Um to elementary school age, and so there's been, I'd say, several grades that perhaps. We hadn't been reaching in the past, that's just first shifts of whatever things that are now reaching out, um and so. I mean, I, my current capacity, like. Or I have gotten to the point where I'm turning people away, because I can't fit them in anymore, and right now, um I would say like. I'm reaching a couple of grades at each school because. Of all the things that we have going on, I've gotten to the point where I just can't accept any more people into my programs. And so I think there's no problem that if I had another person, I mean, and. That we would just roll into that and public programs.
You're doing nothing there now that you possibly could?
We are, um I reached out to IC and Manny, but I haven't heard back from them, and I'm working with the Shelby County Naturalists, who have also partnered with them to. To try to um add some more things um for them, I'd say. I haven't gotten a lot of reciprocation, but I've reached out to them, and like I said, my schedule is pretty maxed out at the moment, and so if. Um I'm kind of at a place right now where I reach out a few times and people aren't getting back to me, my schedule is pretty full, and so. Um, you know, people that are reaching out to me kind of get first priority a little bit, and so um that's why, like I said, we. I've been doing programs with all of the other schools um in the county, a huge part is the archery and the PE. Has been really interesting um to people that they wanted to partner in those um respects as well, and so. Like I said, the majority of my time right now has been a lot of the um. Archery preschool first grade, we all, we have field trips too, I have preschool coming out this week, um and so there's. Only more that could go up from there is because I probably have the bare. Bare minimum of reaching out to grades, but I can't go any further because I don't have any more time, so. Um if you look at my schedule, I pretty much almost every single day have something going on, I leave one day a week, so I give myself some prep time. Um because I need it, and other than that, I think I booked now until Christmas, um and then most of the spring is gonna get filled in with. Um summer camp and with, uh like we said, we have a few. In the seventh grade, all county middle schools are gonna come out for a science field trip. All eighth grade social studies are coming out for history, natural history field trip, so. That's gonna end up, you know, taking up a bunch of the springtime as well, so. Um and that's not public programs, that's just school programs, so there'd be even more, and like I said. I'm capping myself now because I only have so much time, but if there was another person, you know, we could expand and do more. Um to offer, you know, to not have to turn people away, not say no, and to reach out to other people, so.
And then as the spring goes on, as we get towards the end of the school year, we found the schools always doing field trips out to Swan Lake. A lot of stuff that we got thrown into the position for spring, but um so. We have all schools come out, um do field trips with, with new farmers. So, um you know, even that, we can, there's always more classes that want to come out, but. There's only so many hours in the day, so realistically, you'd have to do those kids out there at the same time, or different schools.
And we're um, we're hosting a STEM festival this spring too, with um Northwest STEM. And also with the field trips, like when they come out, and when they came out this spring, you know, they're bringing out. Multiple classrooms at the same time, um right now I rely on reaching out to volunteers to help so that. Or asking the teachers to self lead their activities, because. There's only one of me, and so if I have four classrooms out at the same time, then that means, you know. A teacher might have to lead their own activities, or I have to find three other volunteers. That are willing to lead an activity during their field trip, so that, you know, we can split up, and we don't have eighty kids trying to do the same thing at the same time. Um so that would be another thing that would be nice about having another person, is that. You know, that lessens the number of people I'm trying to get at for field trips, not to mention if they're a staff person. That they can help with all the prep work that goes into that too, and organizing the activities and planning them. Um because if I have teachers leading an activity, that means I have to set them up entirely in fashions that people can just read through and do all of those activities. Even though I'm not leading them, I'm doing way more prep work than I normally would, because I'm leaving all of the instructions to show them how to do things. Um so that will be another thing, that would be nice about having, you know, another person to skill and handle that as well, so.
Well, I guess in my opinion, I'm not against your mission, and I think kids need to spend more time outside, and we need to promote that. The only thing that hinders me from this is I'm gonna do an amendment, a bunch of amendments, um we've already had. I think plenty. Um, so that would be.
A five month delay, as far as from February start to July.
Yeah, and start, and that's to me, that's kind of where I'm at today. Right now.
I'm not against your guys' idea, watching the program grow.
And I think our big thing about wanting to do it now rather than waiting is like, if we wait, we're gonna throw them right in the middle of summer camp. And so I won't have anybody helping to plan any of that, it'll all be me, and then they'll come right into the middle of summer camp. And so we'll have to delay a lot of what we're doing, because we'll have to try to catch them up in the speed, and so I think that's some of the worry. On our end is if we, you know, if we wait, and it will be even later than, you know, potentially later than that, but if we kind of throw them into the middle of summer. It's, you know, it's not necessarily like they're gonna be able to. Jump right into things, and they're gonna get thrown into a lot of things, so I think we were looking at bringing them on. A little bit early, so then that way they could help with all the planning, all the things that go into summer camp and help with field trip season. Um on top of it, instead of waiting, those, I know they're, you know, it's only a few months, but there's a lot that happens in those few months. You know, I start planning summer camps, ideally, didn't happen this year, but ideally I start planning summer camps in January. Um to get myself ready for July, and so if I have a new person coming in, um in the middle, you know, we're gonna end up with. Throwing them right into that, and then just trying to backpedal and try to catch them up to speed while we're trying to do summer camp at the same time, and. Obviously, we can do that, but I want it to be a positive experience for somebody, and I want them to stay for a long time, and I, that makes me nervous.
There you go. And you're still here.
Uh, no bad example, but that's kind of our logic for why we said that, and I mean. Obviously, I'm not the budget person, but since it is so close to the end, it's obviously amendment, but it's not. As big, because it is towards the end, so we're only looking at paying them for, you know, the last few before we hit that fiscal year. Um and kind of from our end of coming there was just. Trying to make it as smooth as possible and really incorporate this person into what we're doing, instead of, you know, throwing them right in the middle, so. That's from our end, why we would rather stick them. Here than wait, and then if, you know, we're waiting, then. It's kind of, their help is getting pushed into the next year, um.
Did you use up all your summer help budget? When I was looking at the numbers, did you?
Well, a part of it, and then.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if that's twenty six thousand, could be if we were to agree.
March first hire or April first hire?
Ideally, February, we could go to March. April gets in the. April gets in the field trip time, so you.
I'm just trying to bend it as far.
If it's a deal breaker.
It's just, it's just a budget amendment thing, you know, and yeah. We're pretty, been pretty lenient about those, and I don't know, sometimes it's like, we need to start fracking down on some of that a little bit.
But so my question was, you can't find money to get, if we were to approve a July one hire. Can you find money within your two point six million dollar? Budget with your seasonal help to get you to. I don't know, I think.
Don't give him that gun.
Well, my, I got two.
Yeah, deduct all that. He doesn't have a two point, no.
Two, I got two questions, uh. So when new farm and them come from outside the county, they're, they get a free ride too, is that right?
They come down, they bust themselves down here, and they, we just do a program with them, that's all we do. We don't feed them, we don't do, I mean, they bring their lunches.
Okay.
It's the same thing we do with.
My second question, do you need an answer to that?
No, I didn't really expect, I mean, if you have an answer, that'd be great, but. That was the plan, but, and like I said, if. If February doesn't work, it's another month to get to March, if that's a better number, it's.
February four, I think you've done your homework. And I think defining what year after, and if the conservation board was a unanimous vote, I mean, those are.
Well, I know, it just comes down to.
Kristen hasn't been here a year. And she's, um. Her ambition and her successes has created it online. You know, and you know what, yeah.
Want to recognize you for that, it is leaps and bounds what you have done for that program.
Yeah. If, if our other naturalists were still here, we wouldn't have this problem.
Well, we would be underserving. No, but I'm just wondering if your seasonal help, that was all.
A report that was ran in February for the fiscal twenty three budget, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's what.
No, I would like.
Obviously, you know, I, I've heard you talk about different programs you have, and then. You, they fill up right away, and so there's.
Camp in seven minutes.
Yeah.
Summer camp in seven minutes?
Like I didn't send out a single advertisement to anyone, and I was like, can you imagine if I did?
And how many kids is that?
Um, we could, we took fifteen per camp, we offered, I think there was two for age groups, I think we got eight camps. Our older ones, um. We had a couple of our, like, the teenage ones, they didn't fill, but all the elementary school ones, they were pretty much full in seven minutes, so we had fifteen kids. Sign up, were all eight of them, that we have people that were mad.
Just, just out of curiosity, could you charge a little bit more for those classes, those camps?
We could.
I mean, you're filling up in seven minutes.
So.
I also understand providing a server, giving a service and getting kids outside, I get.
I mean, we try to make sure we cover all of our expenses, so it's not costing us anything. But it is, yeah. So, all total, in all the sections, I mean, we don't do twenty nine different camp, still. There's different sections to camp, so we do twenty nine summer camps, section together, and reached almost four hundred kids.
Would the board like a little time to think about this, and we can put it on a longer agenda, are you guys ready to make a decision?
I would like to see if you can find the money to get through to February and then, or get through to July one, and then we can. Approve it for next year's budget, but I don't know if that's.
I don't, I don't know. For next week, I mean, he runs a big type budget to begin with, and he's also fight. Higher fuel costs, there's lots of things working against him this year too.
And you, you alluded to something. Not every department comes in with the facts and figures like this. You do a good job.
Well, I don't, I don't. For something about justify why, so.
I could see maybe five or six thousand dollars in your budget that you might be able to pull from, but that doesn't seem even enough. This is one of those that, when we're doing a budget amendment.
So if we did this. Reserves then?
Plenty in reserves.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Let's see until about fifteen minutes.
That is a pretty good point.
Well, that's part of why you're asking about programs and classes and stuff, it's like, we know that we're the county government and that. You know where some of that money comes from, so it's like, where I public serve it, and so that's why we want to keep our stuff. Free, because we understand how the government works, and so, you know, that's part of why we want to have.
A- as I've always said, the government is not always supposed to make the wrong way. You spend money to do programs.
I know when my kids were littler, I could never get them into those programs, because they, you know, you hear about it, and then you call out there, oh. So obviously it has.
Yeah, it's probably not even gonna change it to them, you know, it's still.
No, but at least we have the ability to do.
It may, it may go from a hundred to a hundred fifty, instead of maybe not two hundred, but you might get a hundred and fifty out of it.
When you're not asking to add on an office space and. So according, we have one more budget now left this year.
We can do as many as you want.
Hopefully one more this year. I'm sure we will.
I know.
There'll be one more, because there's always two. Things work, but possibly have three.
I don't think it's. Just the timing. Well, I think we can make the timing work. I have never been a believer of trying to increase staff. Too much, you know, but.
No, I know.
But you have justified, I think.
Well, we haven't increased staff, as long as I've been associated with.
People do govern as when we increase employees. And I never did believe that, but.
Well, and I don't.
But you.
I don't believe in having staff, but if not justification.
Thing is, you're gonna be able to keep busy all year round, that's the big, what you said. You know, I don't know.
Like, I, I mean, I know I just kind of glanced through what I, the material I gave you, I mean, if you have time, look through it, I mean, it's.
Do you think there's some interesting? Good pool of candidates?
What do you think the candidate pool?
It sounds like we were lucky to get you.
It seems like that would be a better time of year to be looking than in the summer. Um, and I'll say a couple of things, like when we thought about this structure, part of what we were talking about and why we like went with. E coordinator and like naturalist, is you're gonna pull different people than if you had like. An assistant naturalist and a naturalist, like. We were hoping that the way we shaped it would pull in a certain level of candidates. Um also because we have like, you know, we have the internship program, and there's a lot of other counties that have those, they pull out a lot of candidates. Um, the other thing that wasn't listed in there is we're working with a program that's out of Des Moines called the Ding Darling Institute for World Sustainability. And they have scholarship applicants, um. And they have scholarship applicants um that have to work in a rural community in conservation as part of their. Um, grant program, and so they're going to start working with us to try to fill fill some of their requirements. And they are hand selected for this scholarship program, so there are a lot of really high quality people. Um, that are going to start, you know, filtering through here too, so some of the connections that we've been kind of building on, um, you know. Through some of our networking, we'll bring people out, but I also think just the position itself will draw. Um, draw people to us in some of the programs that we have going on, so. I know I've already had people asking me about it, if we were to ever ask somebody, they said, they said, tell me when I can apply, and it's like, I.
Let's leave the board.
Well, do we decide today or? I mean, it sounds like. I, it sounds like we're all in on it, on the idea.
Who makes the final um? Interview decision, conservation board as a whole?
Well.
You, you, he does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think for you, it was John, you and John.
Justin.
Yeah.
But you're on the board, but you're a non-voting member.
Right. But it wasn't the board members, it was staff.
Correct.
Yeah.
According, how does that work? Is it just a simple motion?
You would make a motion authorizing him to hire. A naturalist and promote. Listen to.
E.
Title was.
E coordinator.
And then you can set an effective date on that. So if you want to set it. February first or whatever.
I think that's all.
Because you are changing your doc title.
I went, I went higher than you on the fourth of November. That's the doctor, the doctor.
If you were to serve this, it's a Wednesday. It might not look like a day.
Yeah.
I will make a motion, we go ahead and authorize and go ahead and. Average a a naturalist and uh. To promote the next one up to whatever.
Environmental education coordinator.
February first. No, most of them are February.
With the salary, starting salary of forty two thousand.
Yeah.
Or is.
To have. Maybe that's a she gets.
She's just. You have a second?
I made a motion that includes to start, start February first time with those starting salaries.
Forty two thousand a year. Starting February first.
Forty eight.
No sooner than February first.
And Kristen, do you, will your new salary be effective July one, February first? As it. So it needs to be included in the motion too.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I just wanted to make sure you're.
Unless you want to do it for nothing.
So tempting.
I need that bill of salary.
And the budget amendment will come out of lost.
Well.
Well, we can.
No, I should have asked, that was a question, yeah. We need to stay down.
That couldn't come out.
Generally, we would just take it out of the general fund because that's where his. Department's at, but. We can, if you just wanted to take it out of loss, we would just have to move an amendment and then transfer money into.
Let's just do.
We can um. Worry about that if we want to use the amendment and see where.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
There's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
For just. Thanks, thanks for doing your. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good luck in finding.
I'm not sure what.
We had six minutes.
Rich definitely needs the older wives.
So. Didn't have lunch with me.
I'll watch. Remove Zach and Ashton up.
Fine by me, so they can just get them done. Cut our checks.
Also.
Reasonably. I mean, if you did the payables, I could go tell her, hey, put the checks.
I, I didn't.
And your window.
I had, I had one question, one, and I would like to have that.
Only sixteen hundred bucks.
Is it done? I want to make sure that's a Carol County resident.
Yeah, that looks beautiful.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big number, right?
I'll go grab one.
I thought it was a big number.
Which one?
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
I think that's normal.
Zach, not to put the pressure on you, but how long is your agenda basis? Well, you're going to have to be short and brief today.
We can wait.
You can wait.
Did you open beds for the?
We're going to approve payables first and then I'll let you go.
The only one that I had was. General services to clean those on the table.
All that one, well, that did, I think that's all buildings up there.
Seven buildings, it says jail. Old courthouse, probably.
Yes, general service, they all three buildings.
Yeah, they were outside, I saw, I heard the day they were doing.
Okay, so that's probably an.
Long hose and scrub brush.
They're doing it.
Where? Yeah, from the outside and then they did the inside.
I thought, I thought it was quite a shit.
Remember when you took all the screens out?
Pulling a bill real quick. That's one more question, and then we'll have Ashton doing a quarterly report quickly, and then Zach's going to wait until after two o'clock.
I can't find it, but Emily took it out. We're waiting to get a call back.
So when we just.
She's checking into it and then it's not.
Or or can we put in a subject to that it is a Carol County resident?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure subject.
But she didn't remove it for now because when we touched.
I will, I'll make a motion to approve the claims with the exception of the done. Uh, that we make sure that is a Carol County resident.
Second.
But a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't.
Opposed motion carries.
Uh huh.
And I didn't tell. The rest.
All right, we're going to jump down to item number six, the recorder's quarterly report. Good afternoon, Ashton.
Hello.
Actually.
I'm not fair enough, so.
Quarter one, fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And we are down a bit from the quarter last year. Um, which is, that's kind of. Fluctuate for everybody here like normal, nothing out of the ordinary at all. And as far as the state report, that's about the same, we're a little higher on the state money, essentially, the state this quarter compared to last year. But nothing out of the ordinary. Is there anything specific that stands out to anybody or any questions? I have nothing specific to your report here, but when do you guys plan on starting indexing? The US imaging is still need, we have the unedited images back. And they are still in the editing phase, so we've not been able to upload those until we get the editing, the edited.
Have they given you an ETA or you just kind of wait and see how quickly they do it and?
I can reach out, maybe they did not have a. I was just curious. They sent another jump jiver recently or just Friday last week, I assume I'll get a call on why the new jump thread. This week, usually they send something and they'll set it by conference call, so maybe that means they're coming to the next stage here. Thank you. The only other thing in the recorder's office right now, that's we've got renewal period for off-highway vehicles and snowmobiles, that'd be the end September first. That'll end December thirty first. So customers can renew. Their vehicles now, after January one, there'll be a five dollar late penalty. And then just a reminder for those doing snowmobiles, whether you're resident or non-resident, you do need a trip us. To go with that.
And city of Carol brings their UTV ordinance. I think we may be going to improve tonight, we'll have a more people again, but we'll have to have a license for that.
They will need to have a sticker to drive on. A DNR sticker, yes.
That should pick up business, I would think.
Yeah.
I would think so, yeah.
I did see some with another county over, but they did like a. UTV night where people rode from farmhouse to farmhouse, like, now that the state law legislative has changed, maybe people do some more of those things, so. They did it bar to bar to ramp up some business and I think maybe that'll be the new thing.
Thank you, going on right now.
White Rock Conservancy does a. Slow ride, a price, they're conserving, it's called slow ride.
Slow ride, that's what they call it, yeah. So. Does anybody else have any more questions?
I do not.
Report to our, to our member quarters, quarterly report.
I'll make that motion.
There's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
It's two o'clock.
It is two o'clock, did you want to check, is there?
You, yes, man, just walked in. Okay.
But what about that, um?
That's, I'll, that's based, asbestos abatement?
Yeah, that's, that's not.
You need to have for that owl's class ridge.
Uh, Julie went to.
You need to, older, wiser seniors, that applies to you.
Julie wanted to, she's older than I am.
Did she rub off on you?
No. I said, you're just an old girl.
Well.
I've said that across the room.
I was just going to say, she's not near as fast as she used to be.
I think they've got one.
You're going to give.
Zach County tomorrow night.
Oh, rich. But I was give Jason, right, he's really got his crap.
Of course, he could have had that last night or the night before. He always comes with, but we get it today. I mean, it was tough to review all that and make a decision that quick. I would like.
It's pretty straight.
I'm sure they need to be submitted here.
Yeah, I mean.
Good afternoon, John, are you on?
He's unmuted. Yes, unmuted, uh, I am on, yes.
Bids, did you?
I'm sorry, was there a question for me?
Yeah. Did you receive any bids?
I did not. No, I did not, um. They're specifically to be delivered and delivered to the courthouse today by two, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think I just.
Something used there.
Here I go, something like that.
Yeah. That, I had one like that, but I don't. Through a contractor with it, neck close to me.
That one's lethal.
I say something, she might not like. Get hard. Yeah, trashy.
Last time I'm like, very healthy.
The chipper that is on broken.
These things work really strange to do.
I don't know, but you're, you point things off on it.
Oh, yes.
I couldn't get it to sign into that. And. Get paper cuts.
Yes.
Now you get that too. I'm just going to lightly look through this and then I'm going to hand it around the table so everybody can see it, yeah.
Give that back.
Still waiting?
Your road will still be dusty. And lost board probably.
I'm just going to sneak you out for your cruise the other night, you guys should stop on way short.
It's daytime, maybe way too busy.
I had to chuckle when we walked out because you were with Franzen, but Franzen had on his uniform. And you had on black shorts and a green shirt.
Trying to imagine.
You would keep a friend of that. All we need to do is get your vest and a hat.
Hold my hands here.
Do not give him the authority before you go.
We're not going to give.
Boats, back, so chest.
Go ahead.
I'm going to read it off when we get done.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, so, if I received one sealed bid, um, baiting construction. So they're different. Do you want me to read the initial bid and then the ultimate?
Yeah.
Okay.
John, is that okay with you?
Sure, that's fine, yeah, the base bid and then we'll, we'll go from there.
And you here, okay?
Again.
Okay.
Okay, so the base bid is three million, nine hundred eighty four thousand, five hundred dollars. Alternate number one is the re-roofing of the courthouse. That is three hundred ninety one thousand, five hundred dollars. Alternate number two is the operable partition, which would be the partition for the boardroom. Forty nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Say that again.
Forty nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Alternate number three is the jail demolition. Eighty two thousand, five hundred dollars. Alternate number four, additional network cable replacement and wifi drops, five thousand dollars. And that is all.
We also have a bid bond letter with that too, John, it appears to be in correct order.
Perfect.
John, do you want these submitted out to you to look at or?
Yeah, you know, if you wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind uh getting a scanned copy of it. Um, I think it looks like everything's in order with the bid bond. Uh, I'm not sure if they acknowledged the four addenda that came out, presuming they did. Um.
I got your. Addendum numbers one through four.
Perfect, yeah, so that encompasses um the entire bid package and. Uh, that bid number looks pretty encouraging, so um, looks like good news so far, so yeah, if you um, if you wouldn't mind setting. That bid number looks pretty encouraging, so looks like good news so far. So, yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending me a copy of that. I'd certainly appreciate that and then if you want to have any further discussion, I'm certainly open to that as well.
I think we would probably want to, I think we can accept this bid today, but approve it after your review.
Perfect, yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, that's normal procedure.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll take a look at it and review it.
Can accept this bid today and have you review it and then we can. Set it back up. How, how long do you think it'd take you to review this?
Oh, shouldn't take me long. I, you know, I, I should have, depending on when you want it to, if you want it by the next meeting. Absolutely no trouble. I, I don't think it'd take me longer than a day to look through it.
Yeah, we can reschedule. Is that okay with you? Reschedule next week?
And determine alternates next week also.
Well, we do it all at one time.
We need to acknowledge that there is only one.
Just knowledge there's only one bid.
And I didn't notice the completion date. Did it meet the goal as far as the lead times? I didn't study it.
I think the completion date was.
That was determined in the last meeting.
Yeah, it was in the document, the documents, I think.
What were lead times roughly for to get started even on the electrical? Is it too premature to ask that question?
How soon do you think you should start on them?
A week from Monday? As of right now today, it should have been dumped.
They won't need it next week.
Do you have a formal motion to accept the bid?
Um, I think the board should make a motion to acknowledge the bid and to.
Set next week as a.
Approval's pending the S E H review for some.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge that we received one bid for dating construction with the bonds and. And the, the amounts that we had there. And that we will set it up for to approve after review by S E H. Hopefully we'll set it on the agenda for next week.
And that we look at it next week.
Alright, there's been a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I, I assume that this is like every other project. The sooner we let you know, the better chance we got to get.
Well, we want to get the project done, but we're not much important along delays and shift and people.
Well, temporarily, yeah.
One other question for you. Are you okay with? Maybe this, I don't know if I've mastered this or not. I guess I want to know if you're okay. With us kind of delaying that to make sure that we have the product before we even. Start the disruptions. You know what I'm saying? The best as we can because I know that that could be a whole down the stretch for us.
Lead times for reluctance and mechanical issues and mechanical concern that don't do that.
A lot have a lot of it on hand before we even start.
Right, right, okay.
You have the abatement thing too?
I only have one bid for that. We were hoping to get two, getting two.
But that's separate, so we're gonna have to take a look at that as well.
That is not part of the bid, but it's not, the county's gonna do.
Outside your own.
You have a. You know who those abenders are or? I mean, we probably need to get them on board, yeah.
Well, I was gonna see if we got one and this is the only one we've got.
John, you're still online. Did you receive that second one?
I, I have not. I know the one you have, I know that that individual got a head start on it and. That was because they were notified first through the, through the company that did the, the testing. So they got a little bit of an earlier start. There is one more looking at it right now. So I, I would want to give them a little bit of time to get you a number so that you have. To, I, I could call them up and ask them to get that to you by end of week. That way you could, you could have that before the meeting on Monday.
That'd be great.
They could get it to us before Friday afternoon, so Courtney can send that out in the packets. That'd be wonderful.
Sure, yeah, I'll make the phone call, yeah.
Cause I guess we need to get them on board right away. It's gonna be part of it, so.
Okay, good enough.
Thanks, John.
Yep, thank you. Okay, yeah, let me know if you have any other questions.
Okay, we'll do.
Well, it sounded like, I think that was better than what we was expecting, I think.
John, you still on yet?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I am and I could, I could go if you'd like. That estimate, we had a, we had a thirty percent sort of fudge factor just for a.
But your estimate with the whole package was just shot on just under five million, right?
It, it was, yeah. The base bid was four, four million five, so. Yeah, we were high on it. I guess I would add that we were, we were probably thirty percent high again, just kind of putting that. And I can't remember if it was thirty or twenty-five, but we did round up and then we also had a baitment included in our number. So, yeah, the, everything looks promising. You know, with these bids, I'd say we were, we were within the ballpark if we took out that. That kind of unknown factor and if we took out the abatement, I think we're pretty darn close.
How much do you expect an abatement to be?
Well, you have some numbers there. I took just a quick glance at it and. I think that there's some caveats with that. How much does the county want to do right now? And how much would you perceive holding off on later? So what they did was they, they gave you sort of a menu of sorts. So you could do the ceilings obviously, but there's also some flooring, there's some flooring in there. And question is, would you want to do all the flooring at once? So we could, we could get in there and zero in on exactly the amount of abatement that, that you'd have. And then they also put in a charge to demobilize and then come back later at another phase. So there's a small, small number in there for that.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Alright, next item on the agenda is Zach. Zach's got some utility permits, some drain stuff and apartment update.
Alright, uh, utility permit is one from Manning to Stu utilities. What this is, is some additional miles. That they've added on to. Uh, the permit that we approved here a couple of months ago, a few months ago. Some of the works actually with them, there's some communication on their end on that. But we did review it and I think we're, it's been done to our specifications. I think we're okay on that, on that front. Then we've had some conversations about it, but sure that's going to be in the future, so.
So were these done after the fact on some of this?
Some of the work was completed prior to doing this application. They thought this has been, has been taken care of and it wasn't.
I, I will say this, though. I was approached.
I was within Templeton and you got one of these from the city of Man.
Very appreciative, especially natural gas and stuff that.
But it's not, nothing different. Nothing, nothing different than what they had, were doing before. It was just basically extending on the outskirts of their area a little bit further. I'm not sure how many miles there was, six or seven miles and then it's all pieces and chunks here and there. I don't see any issues with what they're doing. It'd be good to get more serious and go down, so.
So I'm just kind of curious with what Western Hour Networks is doing and what Manning's doing and what. Is Templeton doing any?
Not as part of this.
So I guess the whole, yeah, but, but is, are we getting covered? Do you think we're getting covered? I can ask probably.
There, there's not every areas.
They're cherry picking right now.
From what I understand, only certain areas got approved through the grant. But I, I don't know how much more Manningness Utilities is doing. I know Western Hour Networks is going beyond that scope and trying to serve some other customers, filling in some of the holes. I think it's a, the cost effectiveness of that is what they're having struggle with.
But isn't there also part of that grant? And I shouldn't use the word church. I think there's a map that shows where.
Where the underserved are.
There, there's certain areas that I think were approved by that brand. I don't know this, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn from that standpoint. I don't know the, the particulars, but from what I understand, there's certain areas that were approved for that grant that they were able to get funding for. And there's other areas that weren't. And I'm not sure what that was all based on. I do know Western Networks has gone beyond that to add more area. How much more? I don't know. Is every, every corner of the county gonna be covered? Absolutely not. It's not. But we're, we're, we're gaining a lot. I mean, there's really a lot of area that's being served by this.
I see there's not good on. In the south of coming up.
Farmers Mitchell is coming up from Shelby County.
Well, well, that's. Yeah, one of the independents.
So overall, there are, there's a lot of fire going into the ground.
Is that your only utility? I'll make more for the food utility. I'll second that motion.
Then a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, second thing on the list is draining. I have two drains to talk about. The first one is drainage, drainage district ninety, which includes the, the open ditch. We talked about again, that was probably three months ago or four months ago when we talked about that. We had a couple of beaver dams that we had to clear out as well as. We did get that removed. The water had gone down in the channel some before we started the forty-six inch outlet pipe was completely submerged. It was, it was that much water. Now it's about half. So we're still backing up water and we did some additional survey and then the top about twelve hundred feet has some silt in it. Roughly anywhere from a foot and a half to just under two foot of silt in the first twelve hundred feet. So, and, and we were now able to reach it with our, with our backhoe.
So this is in the ditch or?
This is in the, in, in the open ditch of, of drainage just ninety. We just, just passed the bulkhead though, the, the forty-six inch, the forty-six dumps into the open ditch. There's a half mile there that before it gets to the next road. I think it extends past that a little bit before it turns into the natural creek. So what we ended up doing was we hired a contractor to give us long reach to be able to get those out because we can't. It's twenty-three to twenty-five feet down plus you gotta reach out. There's just nobody very probably do that. But there was a local contractor that was around with this long reach that we were able to work with for a pretty reasonable rate. To get these out. It's, his machine isn't down there yet because I told him we need to do some more looking into this to see what this will take. He is willing to continue to do the work as long as it wasn't pushed out too long. That's why I wanted to come talk to you today to see if we want to continue with that. I don't think it's gonna be a substantial cost, I think two or three days. We probably have this out. It'd be placed on the, on the bank, on, on the spoiled bank and actually leveled out when it drives. We talked to the, to the landlord, the property owner. Don't think that'd be an issue. We'd also remove some trees. If you're going through the process, there's one segment that has quite a few trees. Not all of them, not huge ones, but some of the ones we feel that are gonna be continued to be problems. Will be problems in the future. We'll, we'll try to take care of it as well as we go through this, but. I think now since it's been a time of any, we got a contractor that knows drainage work that. Is doing it for a reasonable rate that we can't physically do with the equipment we have.
So that would have been a problem for a long time.
It has been, it has been. I think it's been a problem for a long time. I know I've heard about it before I was even here. And I don't think it was as bad. I think the beaver dams that added to it. So now we're back to, I'll call it normal, what normal was before the beaver dams were there. But I think we had the opportunity to fix the, the grade on that upper end and make it back to original grade of what, what was meant to, to carry.
It's been filled up already. Did that, can you still get back to the pile on that?
I don't, I, I can't. I guess I don't know. We didn't get anything like that. I don't think so. I think it's just water. It's just water was backed up. This year probably not as big of an issue, but other years there had been a bigger issue, so. Another good reason why to get it taken care of now.
And you'd probably just do the year to do it.
It's, it's a large district. It's got a lot of, a lot of tile extreme of that open ditch that, that grain into it. I think it's, I think it's long term cutting. I think it's, could use this years ago. I really don't know. I, he's been working on an hourly basis and I would expect. Be told to bill four or five thousand, but I, I don't know that. I suggest. They have some to do. There, there's a little bit in there, but they're a lot of access, I'm sure. I don't know if they're not that much. If I remember, there's. But most time we do projects, any close with magnitude, that's the. So, and that's okay. Keep the discharge down as always as we can, right? Not do assessment till you have them, but. This is one that's gonna help everybody upstream. I mean, it's, it's.
They know. I'll make a motion to approve the repair. Repair work to be done on drain nine.
Spent a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, second drain is drain eighty-two. I had talked about a thirty inch tile that. Same hole that we're gonna investigate. As we're, we're looking into that, the, the sinkhole was not in the location of where the district tile was. It's something else. I don't know if it's a private tile or if it's just something else, but it's not a district facility. So there will be no, no time or dollars charged for that repair, so. So just wanted to inform you of that, but there's nothing to, nothing for us to do on that. As far as department update, a few things that we've gotten accomplished. We did get the concrete crush over in our, our Canadian stockpile. There's quite a bit of time. Close to eight thousand ton crush, so. Which is good, well, there. Always will be a need at some point in time for that. They did, we did it to process and there was some. Obstacles I got held in over there and those are not very friendly. Because it takes a lot to process those, we try trying to keep those. How the pile the best we can, but obviously that doesn't always work, so. Still.
There's a pretty good pile building up down in Rapids too.
We we we.
In town.
In town?
Yes.
I seen that and I don't know what they do with it.
I think they're working on some storefronts and that might be stuff that's been removed. See if you can find out what they're doing with it, maybe they.
I can. The the hardest thing is this is smaller piles and I'll call that a smaller pile.
Oh, yeah.
It's really hard to get them to mobilize for that. Um, the pile that we had down in Conrappids that we had taken off the the road. Um, that was probably too small for the crush, but. The contractor kind of gave us a favor because they're doing. Working on areas, but.
It's I I don't know if they're done, it's just.
If it continues to build, it's something that would definitely be.
I just seen it.
Yep.
I drove by it uh, this weekend.
Yep, I can check it out. Um, we are done uh, with our full debt concrete patching for the year, um, what we did get the bridge approaches done on the. Power concrete that they south bridge. Um, that got done last week. Uh, turned out pretty well. That's obviously the rest of the road, but we're. Working on steps there, that one, we've got many complaints on, um, it's been bad for a long time, so. Uh, good to have that done. Over the bridge.
But I mean, rest road.
Well, we're working on steps and what we can do, uh, our my plan, I guess, is that we're gonna do some patches, pull that patching. And uh, I know I've had some conversations with you about. Um, diamond grinding. I don't think so, um, I guess it depends what vehicle you're in, but uh. Uh, the biggest thing is is it's still a serviceable road right now. We have other roads that have. Greater need in my opinion, so it's something that's on the radar, but it's not something that's gonna get done tomorrow, so. Um, uh, we keep it. Keep thinking about it, I guess, but uh. We did, when I was up in Calvin County, we did a a twenty twenty miles, we did two four mile stretches and a twelve mile stretch. And I'm trying to remember exactly what the cost was. Maybe sixty thousand a mile to grind, and if that was a larger project, that was. Probably six years ago, something like that.
Did you just say sixty thousand?
And that is not a good patching. But to grind the high spots, but that's but that's probably still. Um, a fourth to a fifth of what it costs to do do an asphalt all the way. So. Definitely something we're looking into, the thickness of concrete, that's on that road, I think it'd be a really good.
You're going across the road north. Just it does the job.
So. Definitely something that I think we need to. Consider, um, it's just a matter of. What it fits into the budget with all the other things.
Looks like you're gonna get a mile down here.
Pilling the land. Um, we did get a little bit of work done in Maple River as well, we did some uh. Dirt patching, you wanna call it, um. We've done that at a few other places, we did some going south of Lincoln spots. Um, traffic road locations, we did some south of Denham, south of one forty-one on a few spots. Um, but uh, we did do some of that in Maple River, Ivy and Guthrie Street. Um, I think there's still some more we can do, but it's about contractor availability, but he had a. Had a, was able to get a free day to get down here to do some, but he's pretty much done for the year now for temperatures, so. Um. Uh, hopefully next spring we can get him back to continue doing some more. We also did some uh, over dirt work along over by the cemetery. And uh, Main Street uh, east of Ivy. Um, I've been there, see it yet, but it sounds like. For the most part, people are happy with it, but. Talked to our guys, but uh. Uh, still still not done with everything, but I mean, any stretch of imagination, still work to do, but uh. Trying to get a start on some of that stuff, so.
And do repairs, is that what you put into the deep? Go along the road?
Um, yeah, it's it's basically. Seal coat and a patch form is what it boils down to, it's emotion with rock. Um, but it it really holds pretty well, um. Probably the best place I'd see is still unsalvability, you can you can see the spots where it's at. Um, it's not perfect for ride, you can feel them a little bit, but it does. Hold those joints and those deteriorated areas together, kind of glues them together. Um, but that's what we really needed uh, in some of those areas, so. Um, it's not not the only fix, but it's you know, tool the tool basket, so.
I did a. Little drive by, did they tell you? I creeped on them over in Maple River. Apparently I'm not that sneaky because I was in my big cap sand van, but I did pull in there and. Saw them there working on the dirt work, so.
But that's kind of what we are going on right now, and we have some shouldering, we need, we're trying to get done yet as well. Um, finishing that stretch up at Lanesboro, we did the east west stretch, but we didn't get it. The big ranvier surfacing on the part going north towards Lanesboro. Uh, we're gonna try to get that done here, we got this fall. Uh, we have a little bit more work to do uh, down by uh, Coon Rapids as well. Drop off on the edge.
And I and I talked to Chris this morning.
So.
Really.
Get.
We're too close to stop.
If we get some moisture.
I know, but. Stay between the lines.
If uh, we get some moisture, we might go do some more reclining with our recliner as well, uh, pull some more shoulders in, but it's. This powder dry that we have, it really does very good, so. We'll see what Mother Nature does, will they help us? She helps us out all the next three weeks or month.
Getting the tent today.
Better than nothing, I guess.
I don't know about that.
All right.
We were on a hundred and fifty F. You know, uh, littered out black tie. First two miles there from seventy-one. That shoulder is really.
It is. It is.
I mean, it really is.
The the edge of the road is taking a beating, um, and that's. Probably one of our worst pavements, I mean, it's still not deteriorating horrible, horrible, but it's starting, it really shows.
There's a lot of traffic now, two miles. Seventy-one. These are vicious broken off.
There's a couple. There's a couple holes we're gonna fill, and I was hoping we're gonna go to get the contractor back. The uh, dinner patching, but.
Thanks, sir.
Plan on just giving you a card?
No.
All right, the next item on the agenda is. Interfund transfers. Um, these are the transfers we do um, after taxes are collected from the rural fund. And the general fund and the secondary roads. Goes twice a year. Uh, we're all transfer to secondary roads will be one million three hundred thirty-two thousand nine sixty. The general fund, two roads will be one hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five.
You want these separate? Can I make a motion for uh, the inter funds operating transfer for one millions. Send the rural basic to the secondary road.
I'll second that.
Just spend a motion in a second, if it's a resolution, will be separately. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And we'll call again for the general basic fund to the secondary road.
I'll make a motion that we. Authorize some one hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from general basic fund to the secondary road.
And I'll second that.
Spend a motion and a second. Yes.
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 Think so, one of these would do two. I'm just putting things in perspective. Serving better to please.
Your ward jazz.
No comment.
All right, item number seven is manure management, annual updates. We have Jesse Baumhover, section four, Maple River Township, no changes. Aurora North, section twenty-one, Richland Township. Russell's, Five's and P Indexes. The shown west site, section thirty-four, Richland Township, no changes. Kevin Baumhover, section ten, Maple River Township, original plan. A and L Farm, section thirteen, Arcadian Township, changed crop rotation and used manure analysis. Now we're gonna go into item number eight, discuss the bond. Broken Associates and Voice and Services, this would be. For our union negotiations, some HR work employee handbook.
Okay, the way I understand is that the AMs did recertify. They're right.
Correct.
That is correct. So I I kind of waited to talk to her until Friday and I talked to her Friday. And I told her, you know. So this bill she's got here for. Thousand is for one half of both those, and I said, really? The you, the road is not gonna need anything. And I told her that, you know, we remember that we did a lot of this stuff. Uh, put it in a separate addendum that's put in the employee handbook. And she said, oh, yeah, I guess I did forget that, so she said, um. It was, the way we kind of left it is that she would just charge us. Four thousand fifty dollars for the ambulance and just drop the secondary roads. And if, but she's open to help out if we need to on a per, we can set it up on a per. Hour or whatever.
So four thousand fifty for the whole year?
Yeah.
If that's agreeable, I got, she said she's, she said. I've worked with you guys long enough, whatever you guys think.
Whatever you guys think.
I kind of let you, you're pushing a little bit, but I just let me run this by him. I mean, I, to me, I think that sounds fair, like she's. I think she. They've done all that, and I said the same thing as the AMs, we did all those. Our separate addendums that we put in the employee handbook.
Okay, so I just have a few things I'm gonna bring up in this. Take a vote, you will. The handbook. Is that part of? That separate group we have organized right now, or are you guys just strictly doing?
We're eyeballing some of the handbook that's not very much of a. Not really, only if.
Insurance seems to be taking up the majority.
Yeah, I mean, you're the.
Uh, probably anything that it does with a benefit, a financial benefit for the employee, probably that's what we've been looking at. Wouldn't you say that's fair?
Okay, and I know, because I know at one point they had brought up getting. Our payroll. On board with what the state wants. So I'd like to, if we can get that ball rolling, give employees a six month notice that come whatever July one, that we're gonna be. Going to not paying in arrears but paying in home. And the words why I'm bringing this up now because it says employee handbook, so I just, again. Do we need to involve her in that process of anything, since she does? Be willing to, because she wrote the handbook, so I'm willing, assuming that if we make a change to that section, she would. Update it, update that for us, and that could be part of the.
I think she kind of reads between lines, she's made a comment to me, she says, you know, with the ambulance. Recertified, she's, I think you probably got about one year away from then recertified. And I think she's kind of knowing that she's busy, but she's gonna probably get eliminated. So I think, you know, if we can handle stuff internally here. I think we should, but if we have to, I think we can go, you will laser, she's willing to do stuff on a per hour basis. When she she tell you what her hourly fee would be? Uh, no, she didn't.
That's what she did for us when we decided redo.
Yeah. Without her. I mean, I think she's in the past, she's been, well, you know that, she's been pretty easy to work as far as emotions and stuff. But I do think maybe if we can handle her internally. Especially like your group now with the union, we don't.
And you know, as far as the committee is concerned. We we've talked about other things as well.
Yep.
HR and and. I I think that conversation needs.
Yeah.
To go on, yeah.
Yeah, I think. We talk about not creeps and stuff, but I think that's one place for me to.
Well. Well, uh. To be, just to be forward here, I I think that. Uh, the next meeting and the, we're going to. Start putting together. Our recommendations to the board, because we want to get them to the board before budget season gets here and gives you a little time to think about it. Um, and I think we're gonna come up with a list of things we'd like to see changed. And we're like, we approach them one at a time, and one of them may be payroll. And we find a date that's comfortable with us. And with the subgroup that we've got, um, using what they feel. Uh, out there too. Um, I think we'll start getting those things to you and then to the board, so we can start making. Picking them off one at a time, start making those decisions. Because some of the employees need to know if we're gonna do things like that. And if we're gonna change insurance rates, if we're gonna do this, drop this plan, add this plan, whatever we're going to do. Or we've been look rewatching. Uh, we made a pretty good presentation for a wellness program last time. I see a lot of Meriden. Simply wasn't too. Horribly priced, I didn't think. Uh, it was doable, so. We'll be getting those to you with some, and then we'll try to bring, I think, uh, the fact. Normally, other than Jamie, he's the only one that's not here today that's on that committee, so. Um, we'll have most of the things that were discussed.
Insurance is just taking a lot of time to get going, I think. Once, I think those that that's gonna start to subside a little bit.
It's kind of a tough nut to crack, because it's got so many fingers to it. Well, if you want to make a difference anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what you're asking today, basically this is on so that we keep around for. Any future ambulance.
Union, she takes. For the fee of four thousand fifty dollars for the year.
That'd be a year, calendar year.
Or this was a half of both. You know, I think she got, she sent us out and and it's after that secondary roads kind of recertified. And then she was, I had to remind her about all the. And it was basically the shape I think. So. I think I would, I think you want to make a motion, go ahead and.
Well, I think we, um, you would do that when we go and cut the check. Because it'll be part of building next time.
Does she need to amend the bill then to be twelve months instead of six months?
I can email her and ask her for an updated one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then just, I think this.
So you want me to call in?
Doesn't matter to me. We won't pay it again until the next bill day, we won't pay it today, so.
I'll see, but she needs to get rid of the three words, one half of it, yeah.
All right. Next item is committee reports.
I'll go first, um. The seventeenth, uh, Monday, we had a wellness meeting and I went to be good. Uh, then the eighteenth, I'd C A D C at noon. Then at one o'clock, I went to Coon Rapids and did a partnership for families meeting, it's a. Kind of a round table of multiple counties. Went down and attended that. That's what I had last week and this week. Tomorrow, I'd. Tomorrow I'd go and try to attend the Glidden Wildcat daycare center. Tour for this partnerships for families, we're going to tour that. Send, see what that's going on there. And that's it for me this week. I can go next, um, on the fourteenth, um. Tended the dedication for the. Charters of freedom down in Manning. And that was, uh, that was a pretty cool deal, the weather was not cooperating, but, uh. There's a lot of dedication, um. No. He explained what the whole situation was. There's several, like forty-four of them or something.
First one in Iowa.
First one in Iowa. Yeah, yeah. And it's a pretty cool deal, if you get an opportunity, go down and see that, it's, it's pretty neat. Um, and then, uh, Friday on the twenty-first had the North Raccoon. River Water Management Coalition Meeting out at Swan Lake. Uh, we did have a quorum, we could conduct business, so we jammed a lot of stuff in there, so. Yeah, this week I have nothing scheduled.
Back on the eleventh, I had landfill executive board meeting. Can, um, around twelve. The charters of freedom in Manning. And then. Last Thursday was decaterization for children meeting. That's all. I have this week, um, on the twenty-seventh here from two to four. What it is. Okay, three to five, thank you.
It's just, that's what I had. That's all. Okay, uh, on the Monday of the tenth, I did a paper and a radio. The twelfth, I attended the candidate forum. And Friday the fourteenth, uh, I stopped and visited with Donna Berry and she's in the Tampton area. And visit her, that's the area rep for Senator Grassley. And then on that evening, I had policy council meeting. And. That thing's going to screw up. Uh, we went through everything there, the program reports, the financials. Uh, we did do a waiver of a total, of total waiver of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then, uh, they did go ahead and, um. Boat, uh, new officers in. That was on the policy council. And then on, they also had C A D C. On the eighteenth on Tuesday, and I think Richard reported that, one of the things I thought was interesting with retail coach. They tracked the number of people that went to merchants. Park, it's forty-five thousand, but that was. The actual numbers that had people that visit, but there was actually a hundred and twelve thousand, there's wild people repeat. Although that was something kind of cute.
So question, does, does the city of Carroll and C A D C employ the retail coach?
City of Carroll.
City of Carroll, but they said that C A D C.
Yeah.
They gave a, uh, update. No, I heard it at city council, but I didn't know if there was, if you guys were both.
No, we're, well, we don't. It's just, they're funded through. Uh, let's see, now you got me, okay. Then on the nineteenth, Stephanie and I, uh, and Mayor Beardmore met out new opportunities, uh, they were. Looking at a grant, uh, program that they were thinking about applying for a grant. And it's partnerships for success to prevent alcohol misuse. And, um, after we got done looking at it, these are, they set up metrics and they kind of determined like. Okay, we're going to try to have bars shut down by a certain time, they're not, you can only sell so much specials of drinks during, um. A month and stuff like that. Personally, I thought there was more issues there. That could have caused black eyes for new opportunities and caused more problems. And then they would be penalized five thousand dollars. For a year, for five years, if they didn't meet those metrics. So when we left and Stephanie, I'm leaving with Royer, but it was pretty well decided that we just. And I, they're not going to apply for that. Thursday then I.
Tough battle to fight.
Oh. I mean, you got everything to lose.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have the public, when you're, you're trying to tell me. How do you tell new entrepreneurs, you're going to limit the amount of sales you're going to play?
You can't do that. What is the upside to it?
We're trying to curtail alcohol.
But the grant was for ninety thousand.
So you got ninety thousand?
But you have to hire a full-time person, so. Knock that down to thirty thousand, then you get. Charged five thousand dollars a year if you don't do a fifty percent, succeed fifty percent. So if I send fifteen, twenty, so now we're about ten thousand dollars and we're going to go ahead and make everybody in the general public match. Because I, first off, I'm not going into a private entity. That's government overreach. So we just said no.
Yeah. Uh, then on Thursday, I sat in on the highway thirty coalition, which really was not a lot, uh, done that. And then Friday I had the S Center Board Meeting, uh, they, uh. They did, uh, they're going with Renee again for one year because they think that, that union's going to go away up there. Um, they averaged thirteen point one kids for the day. Or for a month, they had eleven in there that day. All of those eleven, seven of them were in there for sex offenders. We had none in there that night. Okay, and then we're looking at trying to get the M H I, M H I to put in some additional wickets and toilets for two cells. Control kids that are. And I will tell you this, the comp receivable is one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, and that is current. And I remember when that used to be about thirty, thirty-five thousand a month. So that is what I had up and this week I have new opportunities boarding on Thursday.
I have that meeting with Jean out at new opportunities. Just kind of touched on it, but. And I also had a daycare meeting, they're still looking for five full-time staff. Everything else is going well, but they do need a front. Person coordinator as well, so right now there are two people are covering for three people plus kind of covering the classrooms for understanding.
How many people on waiting lists, curious? I mean, um, children.
Um, I can tell you in January. They're expected to receive five new infants. That are already. For families already are there.
Have siblings there.
To answer how many they actually have on a waiting list, I don't know what that is, but it's a lot.
Yeah, I was curious.
I want to say it was in the nineties that they had on a waiting list, but.
So, so if they, um. Can hire these people, does that mean they can increase their? Tend to extend? Because a lot of, you know, a lot of money that way, yeah.
As long as they transition correctly, because you know, you have your infant room and then once they get to. Three to eight months and they transition to their next room and then as they go further. The infants require more. Staff.
Right.
And then less staff as you go over.
But if they were to hire, see if they could find all. You know, all the, uh, if they could fill those positions. So they're, they're basically increasing ones. Their.
Ratios.
Yeah, and they can. Basically, they can work it.
As long as they're filling in those age ranges, because that's the other problem too, because you can only have.
Where the needs are.
But they do, I mean, they, they truly do have a staffing issue. And I don't think they're the only ones, I think every daycare is having some issue.
They just daycare.
But they've got the square footage and the classroom size there, they just need to.
I mean, eventually they would cap out because they can't.
Exactly.
Grow any other space, but yeah, no, they're short-staffed.
How many staff are they short?
Five full-time.
Right now, new opportunity, or head start, just head start along. Two, four, six, eight, nine, ten of them. I'd be sure just some head start.
Does it start up on Main Street now because of the fire?
No.
They all fire out there that knocked something out, didn't it?
But they're up in that other building.
On Main Street.
No, 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 that's just a family development site.
Okay.
Head, the head start, they moved up there to where the channel seat corners.
Yeah. By the animal rescue them.
Luckily we had that building.
Actually.
We could move in because we.
It's on Noble.
Early head start, center base sector, and then we had one where head start, um, basement after a fire.
Perfect.
But the other thing I was going to say, I forgot, don't head start, because we are probably going to have to waiver on our early head starts home base because. People have now been trying, you know, doing two jobs to keep up.
Yep.
So now they haven't changed the income guidelines, the threshold, the two hundred percent. Poverty level, and now their champ Paul files for use, so.
Earn more money, but you lose your free, or your subsidized daycare. Which most. I'm sorry, most ladies. The time they pay their daycare and required a decent wardrobe to. Uh, they pretty much work people. She better say like that. I, I know several young ladies.
Then I went and looked at the job in Maple River. And then my work off did the chamber night shift, so I want to thank the board members that did show up for the chamber night shift. And then I did as well attend the candidate forum. This week, all I have is a newspaper and radio. Make sure it's after this.
Any notes in courtney?
Anything online?
No.
All right, we're going to be going into closed session once everybody gets back, so we'll have to make a motion to go into closed session. These are no stats, if you want to see them, per catheter.
That's good.
It's not only. So as far as you're concerned. It's not only here. It, it's, it's, it's a really atrocious cycle because. The average business can't get anybody, and if they do get somebody, they got no place to put their kid in a daycare.
It's just, we can't handle that.
You had one that died in automobile accident.
So we've had. Big change over there.
Man, that's why I keep that door open, you know, we're going to go to closed session, so it's going to get hot. All right, we'll be going into closed session for Iowa code section twenty-one point five. To evaluate the professional cut. Competency of an individual whose appointment hiring performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needlessness or. Irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual's request at a closed session. We need a motion on closed session?
Tell them, second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion, if not always in favor, sign that by by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries where enforced.
Vote.
Motion.
We go back to an open session, no decision.
We are in open session again and I want to make sure everybody knows that there was no decision made and closed session. And our last item on the agenda is to discuss public education state and local government rider lease.
Yep.
Program.
So.
For Dell financial.
Yes, so this year obviously we budgeted money to get new servers. Everybody knows kind of what the server is, it's where all applications live. When you purchase servers generally you get your sands with it. Kind of the. I don't know, our IT department in the past has split that up. And what happens is when you buy your sands, you know, the next year, the technology from what you buy is, you know, behind and they don't match up that well. So when I spoke with Dell, the suggestion was to get sands and servers together. Obviously I didn't budget for that, I'm not gonna ask for a eighty thousand dollar budget amendment. So with Dell's financial agreement, they were able, they would be able to do our servers which we already got the equipment for this year and the sands. And I would just budget for the money for the sands next year, in my December budget. And so I would pay for my servers this year, which like I said, ours was budgeted for. And then the eighty grand would be like at the first July we would budget for, which I would have budgeted for anyways to get new new sands. So it's just to get the equipment ahead of time, we had to sign a lease, they're basically releasing down it till the end of the term of the twenty four months here. But as July one, once we pay that final payment, we own everything, so it's done. There's not really any. I guess financial charges for that or anything, it's just getting us the equipment sooner and it's making us sign a lease to do so.
So did you already sign the lease?
No.
Is that what this is?
That is, that is what, I signed the lease, but I have to have confirmation of the board. Basically that I'm authorized to sign on behalf of Carroll County to get the lease to get my equipment. So on the back end of that, if you look at it.
Sorry.
There's what, that's just my big word, that's, it's just a certification saying, yes Dalton Morrison works at Carroll County as IT director. He's authorized to buy equipment on the county's behalf. So that makes sense to you?
He can buy equipment, but he can't sign lease agreement, that's correct.
No, and that's why they have that second say to attorney. No, it's board approval for a lease.
Something like this, I would think he'd probably be fine without having John regular. Basically. But this is also asking us to approve a lease or a budget item that is going to be coming out for fiscal year twenty twenty.
So budget is great, I agree, hundred percent. I, I don't want to do a budget amendment for it obviously, and I need the equipment, like it's, it's not a matter if, if I, I should have it, I need the equipment for our network to keep running. Efficiently and then to be able to keep, because a lot of like, you know, the police files and stuff like that, that's all stored on that big sand. So we have to have that memory that it just keeps growing every time we get more new images, the new pictures, that just gets bigger. So I'm accommodating for that and getting that done.
So hard to get it at the same time as the equipment that they want you to release.
Yes.
So by doing this, all we need to do is make a motion to authorize him signing this.
Need to sign the back second please.
You have certification.
Yes.
But it would be by the board would be a motion.
Board has to approve.
Second.
Spend a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, because anybody, the only one that can sign a lease like that would be an elected official.
Ben, is there any, oh Dalton's.
You know, I should probably look, because I have not been looking that long.
No, no, I just needed to get my son alive.
No, we're good.
You just want me to sign my name. Sure. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Spend a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.